Okay, it's six o'clock. We're gonna call to order the Apache Junction Unified School District's April 22nd. Governing Board Regular Meeting will begin with roll call attendance. Mrs. Ross?
President.
We have Mrs. Ross on the phone tonight. Mrs. Williamson?
President.
Mrs. Garcia?
President.
Mrs. Lane?
President.
And on present, all board members are in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for a moment of silence. Want to item 1.3 Adoption of the Agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? Somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Miss Lane seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And on yes, that motion passes five to zero. Item 1.4 Board Meeting Minutes Not Previously Approved. Would somebody like to make a motion on the March 25th Regular Meeting and the April 1st Work Session Minutes?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 25th Regular Meeting and the April 1st 2025 Work Session Minutes.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Miss Lane seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And on yes, that motion passes five to zero. Information-only items. Governing Board Members Report. Mrs. Ross, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Nothing this week.
Okay. Mrs. Williamson?
I had the privilege of attending the Donuts and Discovery, so that was really nice and just learned a lot of good information there. So that was about it.
Mr. Michael? Mrs. Garcia? No. Mrs. Garcia?
I can't remember how. It feels like it's been a while, but most of the board attended a consortium and it's basically where the district and Judy was there as well. Where the district goes with other districts and we just talk about the different things going on and so, and they feed us. And so, that was always, it's always nice to see everybody there.
Mrs. Lane?
I went to the Lost Dutchman Dinner thing the other day with Bob and a couple of other teachers and stuff and had a good time there.
Well, I attended the Boys and Girls Club with Ms. Williamson and Dr. Popolardo and Ms. Lane. We were all there. It was an amazing night. Dear friend of ours, Connie Vanrell, does an amazing job with the Boys and Girls Club and I am honored to have a great partnership and friendship with them. I think they do a great job for our kids. Also, I attended the consortium and it was good to get together with all our other board members and see what's going on in other districts. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Dr. Popolardo for being named a finalist for the 2025 School Connect Champions of Education Award and the Changemaker Superintendent Category. So congratulations, Dr. Popolardo.
Thank you.
On to the superintendent report.
So, Madam President, members of the board, community members, students, staff, I want to start off with Mario Torres Hernandez was the Arizona Central Student of the Week last week. So, congratulations to him on that great nomination. We attended the Lost Dutchman banquet. That was, that was a lot of fun and we got a lot of money out of that for our sports team. So, thank you to Lost Dutchman for all that fundraising for us. We had a career fair last week on April 14th. It was very successful. We have two students going to state for track this year, so that is fantastic. That, that's well done by our coaches and our kids. They're performing well. So, what I'd like to tell you tonight is that, and he can't be here tonight because he has a family obligation, but Trastan Yates, a high, a former high school graduate of AJ, has been named the Athletic Director of the High School for, for next year. So, we're very glad to have him. We want to thank the Elks Club for their great donation tonight of $1,500 so that we can continue to have events like the Student of the Month. That really helps us out. We appreciate that from the Elks. So, I, we have a couple of presentations tonight that I planned for you. So, this is gonna be a longer superintendent's report than normal, but it's our last one where we have the public to see it. So, we can have John Salzby give you an update on our partnership with ARP and the, and the reading program and how it's helping our struggling readers. So, John, come on up, please. Sorry, Jerry.
No problem. And I too am a board member. I am a board member at Casa Grande Elementary School District. I appreciate everything you do and I appreciate giving me this time to talk to you about the achievement experience score. We've been here in Apache Junction for two years, right? Yes, two years. And, and we're very, very happy to be with you. So, this is a chance to say thank you for being a vital part of, of our program. Next, please.
I do the mouse.
The challenge is, and, and, and I preach it to the choir here, but being able to read is the key to a child's future. First, students learn to read in the early school years and after third grade they read and learn. In Nell County, 66% of our third graders are not reading after third grade. And children who are unable to read at grade level by the end of third grade are four times more likely to drop out of high school. One out of every 10 young people without high school, young men without high school degrees will end up in jail. And the Arizona Mayor's Roundtable in 2014 estimated that each dropout will cost the state over $400,000. And this is in 2014, so it's much, much more expensive. Over his or her lifetime in services and law and revenue. These are, these are students who drop out.
So, our answer is attacking this problem with trained volunteers. 45 years and older provide one-on-one tutoring. Tutoring takes place in person and online with second and third graders. In the past four years, this program has given a gift of reading to almost 700 students in school districts across Nell County. We started in June 2020 and began tutoring in November of that year. Virtually, as you recall, there was a pandemic that was going on at that point in time. So, we couldn't go in the classroom to start, so we had to do it virtually. We have three schools, 60 volunteers, and 94 students.
This is difficult to read, but the darker blue is the Apache Junction School District. And, it's very difficult. Sorry about that. But, but you can see that we have, I think, 37 students currently. We, our staff and your staff believe that we might be able to do as many as 60 students. Next, you're planning to, so we are, we are, we are planning to, to be able to provide for 60 students if we can get enough volunteers. Next, please. So, in the 24-25 school year, we had over 300 students as part of the program. And again, this is, this is in nine school districts across Nell County. Stretching all the way from Stanfield up to Superior. 83% of the students in the program moved up one or more grade AARP programs and nationwide in the AARP programs. This is students who are getting the same kind of, hopefully the same kind of help that our students are getting. 62% of students moved one half grade level. So, we're doing much, much better than, than the national average. And 38% moved up to full grade levels. So, we're very, very proud of, of those statistics. Next, please. So, you can see, end of year ceremonies, the woman and the, and the student there at the top left, she is, she tutors virtually. And what's interesting about the program is, is a strong connection is made between virtual students, between virtual tutors and the students. And as a matter of fact, there's really very, almost no difference between the progress that's made by the virtual students versus the in-person students. Those who are doing it in person versus those doing it online. Very little difference. So, this is end of year ceremonies, which are coming up very soon here. Next, please. So, most programs have a large school district or a city to fund. For example, Tempe, they have three staff people that are, City of Tempe staff people who run the program. We don't have that luxury. We don't have a, a, a large school district. We don't have a large city that can, that can help to pay for this, for this program. So, so we have tried to spread out the costs to everybody. School districts, municipalities, to help pay for, and, and the counties also tell them to pay for the program. 66% of our, our program funding is slated to come from grants, donations, and events. And then one-third, or, or, yes, one-third would come from school districts and municipalities. Not all municipalities are participating. Unfortunately, the City of Apache Junction is one of those municipalities that is not participating. So, if anybody knows.
They are participating for 25-26, yes.
Oh, excellent. Okay, sorry. Dr. Popolardo has succeeded where I could not. So, excellent. Thank you, sir. Good. And so, let's see, let's, next slide. So, our request is that you continue to participate in this program. Again, we project 60 students. And actually, that number will be lower because if the city is participating, they will pay one-third of that cost. So, your cost will be a maximum of $8,000 and change. And this would be again, if we get, if we get enough tutors to tutor 60 students. If it's less than that, then we, then we bill you for less. The other thing we ask is that we're always looking for volunteers. We're always looking for tutors. You know anybody, anywhere in the United States, they can participate in this program. They can do it again in person, they can do it virtually, they can do it from their living room in Bemidji. So, wherever, wherever they may live, they can, they can participate. Next, please. And again, just to say thank you very much for the time and for your participation.
Thank you so much.
If you remember last fall, that was a while ago, Kelsey came to us about a leadership program she was doing with Paper Cranes for students. So, Kelsey's here tonight and with a couple of students or so to make a small presentation about what they've learned through that program.
Hello, for those of you I haven't had the opportunity to meet, I'm Kelsey. I'm the Practice Manager at Paper Cranes Behavioral Health. With me tonight, I have Shannon Robinson and Christopher Nope. They are two of our clinicians. He's part of our school-based program that we host here in the district, as well as four students from our leadership program. We have Stephen, we have Trey, Rowan, and Roxas that came to speak with you guys tonight. Over the last 12 weeks, we have had the absolute honor of working with these students that were nominated by Ms. Ginnett, the high school, school staff, or their peers as students that already carried some innate leadership abilities. And we've been able to work with them on real-world leadership skills. So, we talked about things like communication and conflict resolution, public speaking, while still supporting their emotional well-being and confidence. We were able to have some community members come in. So, as an example, the Assistant Chief of Police with the Department of Police came in and spoke with the students. Not just about how to pursue a career in law enforcement, but more simply how to overcome some challenging obstacles and foster that resilience to be a positive leader. What I especially want to highlight is these students, not just the ones here with us tonight, but the ones that participate in our program in any capacity, their insight, their strength, their emotional well-being was well beyond their ears. Their ability to show up and have thoughtful discussions, confront challenges, while still being honest and courageous amongst their peers was something we left inspired by every week. It's so clear that they care so much about their peers, their school. With that said, I do want to give them a chance if they want to speak for themselves about their leadership experience and the goals that they have for the future.
My name is Trey. My favorite thing to do is eat food. I love food. And my favorite part about being an active leader in my community is the many different personalities that I see every day and interact with every day in the community. As well as this leadership program, Cranes for Change, has made me reflect on who I am a lot as a person. And it's reminded me and it's shown me many life lessons that I've learned throughout my years of growing and getting older, growing up. And, but it hasn't just affected or, it hasn't just affected me, but it's also affected several other students and throughout school.
My name is Rowan Onisak. And Michael, her being a better leader is to improve my confidence.
Hello, my name is Roxas Bush. Pledget a mutual.
Hello, my name is Roxas Bush. Pledget a mutual. And I would like to be a better leader by helping others when it is needed.
Obviously, our, our goal with this program, like I said, was to foster some of those innate leadership abilities. So, in the group and behind me, we have some freshmen, we have some seniors, and it's been so cool just to see them interact. I truly encourage you all, if you ever get the chance, to meet the students where they're at, have these same conversations, and I'm confident you'll leave as hopeful and inspired as we did every week.
Thank you so much.
We're almost there. At this time, I want to have the Principal Four Peaks come up with their teacher, Jason, Jason Chavera, who is our VFW Teacher of the Year for the 24-25 school year.
Congratulations.
Angie, are you ready? Yep. Great. I'm glad you're all ready to do that presentation because we're gonna do something different. I know that you remember the presentation she gave at Donuts and Discovery. She really thinks she's doing that tonight. All right. We're gonna save that for May because right now, we want to recognize you, Angie, Dr. Angie Thompson, as our Employee of the Month for her, come on up here, for her outstanding leadership in curriculum development and instructional excellence. You've all heard Angie speak over the months about what she does, right? I mean, and I cannot tell you how far we've come from one conversation we had last March. Remember that conversation? Right? She's always prepared, always has an idea. You know, Angela has gone above and beyond what we could have expected to get done in terms of curriculum mapping, the documents, and the assessments. Okay? We started off as a small project. We were gonna focus on K-5 reading and English, right? Then it went to math, and now it's going to 612. Okay? In that small amount of time. You know, you've, you've made detailed curriculum maps with, they can click on it and go to the essential standard, right? They can click on it and get the resources they need, right? It's basically a lesson plan that's already made for English and math, right? What's more impressive, what's really more impressive, is that it gives our teachers the capability to know where every student is every three weeks on the essential standards they're supposed to learn, right? We know exactly where every kid is when we go to our professional learning communities. It not only helps track students, it helps them be engaged and meet, and helps teachers help kids right where they're at at that very moment in time. We don't have to wait. Okay? So, thanks to her hard work and her team that she's put together to get this done with her, teachers have a clear, practical roadmap of what to do in the classroom with all those resources we give them. And it's an overwhelming amount of resources that teachers have, right? But this breaks it down for you into a nice recipe. Her dedication and vision is helping building a culture of excellence in our district. She's a truly, Angela's truly an example of what it means to be committed to students and to excellence and to bring us forward. You know, we keep talking about that, right? We need to move forward. And she's doing that. Her hard work reflects her collaborative ability, okay? She's innovative and she has a heart for making a lasting impact for children. And she's bringing a horse to Desert Vista on Friday. So, please join me in congratulating Angela Thomson, Thomas Thompson.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Next, I'm gonna ask you, Alexis Scott, would you please come up for TLC?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alexis Scott with the Early Learning Center, the preschool up the street on Ironwood and Broadway. And I'd like to highlight my special employees this evening. The first one tonight, I'd like to take a moment to recognize is an incredible volunteer at the TLC who brings so much heart and creativity into our Kickstart to Kindergarten program, Joanne Valenzuela. Joanne shows up with the most creative and truly unique projects that spark curiosity and imagination in our little ones. The moment she walks into the room, you can see the students' eyes. They light up with warmth and excitement. They absolutely adore her. But it's not just the fun activities, it's the connection she makes. The kids are so curious about her and drawn to her energy, it's clear how much she's touching their lives. She's not just volunteering her time, but shaping and preparing our, our young learners. Thank you. It's my absolute pleasure to recognize someone who has truly become the heart of our toddler room here at the TLC, an employee of AJUSD for 12 years, Ms. Daisy Kennedy, TLC Classified Employee. Daisy is one of those rare people who come up every day, who show up every day to work with her whole heart. She works so hard, she's dedicated, and she never complains. She does her job with endless patience and passion that shines in everything she does. Parents have shared such beautiful words about Daisy. One described her as the best childcare provider they have ever known. Someone else shared, she's loving, kind, and gentle, but also consistent in providing structure and routine with toddlers, the, the structure they need to thrive. Another parent said, she is a wonderful role model and even went as far as saying, the world is a better place because of people like Daisy. Daisy, we see you. We appreciate you. Thank you for everything you do. Lastly, for our TLC certified, I'd like to honor and recognize someone who is truly special, who has spent over seven years pouring her heart into the lives of our little ones, Ms. Allison McCouch. Ms. Allison is an early childhood special education teacher. She is compassionate, kind, and is always going the extra mile helping everyone around her and creating enriching experiences for our young learners. Whether it's collaborating with teachers for lesson plans or IEPs, or stepping in to help a colleague, or sharing ideas to make classroom experiences better. Allison is there, dependable, thoughtful, and genuine. She leads with her heart, making our school community stronger every single day. She is a constant source of positive energy and support to her students and families. One parent shared, Ms. Allison is such an amazing teacher. She cares so much about her students and is the best cheerleader. You can tell just by the way kids are excited to go to school. Her happiness becomes the happiness of every child who walks into her classroom. She lifts them up, cheers them on, and creates a space where they know they are safe and seen. Thank you, Allison.
Congratulations.
I'd like to introduce Principal Kelly Fant with Desert Vista for Students of the Year.
I struggle with this because I'm so short. Thank you, Mrs. Scott, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Popolardo, members of the community, colleagues, and families. My name is Kelly Fant and I am the Principal of Desert Vista Elementary. I'm honored to present two of Desert Vista's remarkable fifth grade students for recognition tonight. One was one of our students at the beginning of the year and one was just our Student of the Month last year. So, our first Mustang that you guys met last month, if you were here, is Delaney Garcia. So, as you recall, Delaney has been a Mustang since kindergarten and says that her favorite thing about Desert Vista is that everyone is kind and it is easy to make new friends. Her favorite subject is math and she likes learning about fractions. Her favorite book series is the Diary of a Little Kid series. She's at a 640 in IXL. We're getting ready to check that, so I'm sure she's gonna be higher here in just a couple of weeks, and has met or exceeded expectations on math benchmarks. She has a hard time picking a favorite teacher, but she did mention Mrs. Martinez because she is kind and made things fun. She likes to play soccer and is part of an outside soccer club. She also likes to play with her dogs, Zazu and Junie, or do arts and crafts with her family. And her goal is to become a defense attorney. So, her teachers, who are all here tonight, so we have Mr. Smith, Ms. Mahal, and Ms. O'Connell over here, they all came to support both of our students. Her teachers say that from the very beginning, Delaney has set an outstanding example for her peers. She's the kind of student who leads by example, not just through words, but through her everyday actions. When given an assignment, she always puts forth her best effort. Her commitment to doing her best is evident in everything she turns in. And when she's finished, you can almost always find her with a book in hand. Delaney is also someone her peers and teachers know they can count on. Her ability to stay grounded and positive is truly remarkable and adds so much value to the classroom environment. It is a privilege to have Delaney in class this year. Her character, leadership, and quiet strength have less, have left a lasting impact, and there's no doubt she'll continue to do great things in the future. Congratulations. Congratulations, Delaney. And our second incredible Mustang is Liam Gonzalez. So Liam has been a Mustang since kindergarten as well. He was able to remember most of us teachers, but said that Mrs. Hart was his favorite because she was nice and a great teacher. Liam is a very high achiever. Reading is his favorite subject because it's easy. He likes to read comic books and the Dogman and Captain Underpants series. His reading IXL score from February was an 860, which means middle of 8th grade. He is equally talented in math, his February IXL score was 600. Liam plays the trombone in band and likes to play Roblox. He loves to drink milk. That was volunteered. And says his family will go through about three gallons every two weeks. He doesn't save any for anybody else, I don't think. He doesn't have any pets, but would love a French Bulldog. And the name is going to depend on whether it's a boy or a girl and the color. And he likes to swim when he goes to Mexico. So his teachers have this to say. Liam has been a consistently positive student throughout the entire year. He approaches each day with a can-do attitude and a genuine desire to succeed. One of Liam's most admirable qualities is his positive mindset. His optimism is contagious and contributes to a supportive and encouraging classroom environment. Liam is always ready to participate, offering thoughtful input and showing enthusiasm for learning. He stays on task, manages his responsibilities, and leads by quiet example. It's been a pleasure watching Liam grow this year, and his consistent effort and attitude will no doubt continue to lead him to success. Congratulations, Liam. And we are so proud that we have both of you just for a few more weeks, and then you're off to bigger and better things at the junior high. Now I would like to bring up Ms. Braxma from Four Peaks.
Governing Board, Madam President, Dr. Popolardo, and Community. It's with honor that I have this opportunity to recognize two of our outstanding 5th grade students at Four Peaks Elementary. I'd like to start by asking Seren Secuentes to come on up. All right, so this is Seren, this is her second year at Four Peaks. When I asked her what the most memorable thing about Four Peaks, she says it was 4th grade because it was awesome to complete one year at Four Peaks and being able to say goodbye just for the summer with my friends. Seren is a student council representative this school year. She says she enjoys the student council meetings and working together with her peers. Seren is also in our school band and plays the trumpet. Her teacher this year is Mr. Shaw, and Mr. Shaw says that Seren is both reliable and calming. So much so, I can look to her as an avenue to ground myself in what can sometimes be a chaotic environment. She can also be silly when appropriate, and others flock to her to play off that energy. Seren has thrived this year, both socially and academically. She is attuned to the needs of others, being exceptionally aware of the behaviors required to make a day run smoothly. Tasks are completed with such care, like a true scholar invested in the craft. This has resulted in impressive showing for many of our tests and a potable growth. With Seren's attitude, anything is achievable, and I trust that she acts with her education, goodness, and peace in mind. I feel blessed to be involved in her education. And that was from Mr. Shaw. Ms. Renzulli, who is her art teacher and student council sponsor, says this about Seren. Seren is a person who you can rely on. She is always there for you if you need anything. She is always on time to student council events, and if we are short of a person, she always steps up to fill in. When I think of Seren, I think of the following quote. "I am only one, but still I am one. I cannot do everything, but still I can do something. And because I cannot do everything, I will not refuse to do something that I can do." That was from Edward Everett Hill. "So she never says no to doing things and/or to help out, and she is always determined to finish what she starts. I truly enjoy Seren's unique personality. She brings into the art classroom when she attends and when she attends the student council meetings. I feel that she is the one that ends up inspiring you and others. Seren has a lot to give and is a joy to know and work with. I congratulate you, Seren, for being a wonderful and caring individual. Congratulations." All right, our next student is Denver Martin. All right, this is Denver. Denver has also been at Four Peaks, I think, since kindergarten. And Denver plays the violin in our School Strings Program. Denver stated that his favorite subject is science because he enjoys the science experiments. And Denver also mentioned that when he graduates, he would like to be in the field of construction. He likes to build, he would like to build furniture out of wood, like his grandfather. Denver is our student council president this school year. His teacher is Ms. Miller, and Ms. Miller says this about Denver. "He is an outstanding student. He demonstrates consciousness in his work, showcasing a strong work ethic and dependability. His intelligence and organizational skills further contribute to his effectiveness as a leader in the classroom. He is respectful and follows the rules, always willing to complete any task given and doing so with a positive attitude. Denver is not only helpful and kind, but also thoughtful in his interactions with others. He is someone I, along with his classmates, can rely on to foster excellence and teach by example." Now Ms. Renzulli, again, the art teacher and student council rep, says this. She says that Denver is an amazing student who always looks out for his school and his fellow classmates. He has become a strong leader, and everyone enjoys his company when he is participating in student council events on campus. "I recall one time when he was running down, running the student council meeting, Coach Young was needing a pump to pump up the equipment, and just his words of..." Yeah, let's wait, here we go. Oh, and Denver said, "Don't worry, I will go and buy a pump at Home Depot for Coach." All right. "So just his words of endearment make you feel that the best is yet to come. Being in his presence brightens your day. Even though he seems very quiet and reserved, this young boy has brilliant ideas and can surprise you when you least expect it. I truly enjoy working with Denver this year as an art student and a student council president. It is an honor to celebrate Denver being the Student of the Year. Congratulations." At this time, I'd like to invite Pat Smith, the principal at Peralta Trow.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Popolardo, members of the board, community, parents, students. It's so amazing to see you all. I'm the proud principal of Peralta Trow Elementary, and this evening I'm going to present the Student of the Year awards to two fabulous Bobcats. We took a look at students and if they are demonstrating not only kindness but great citizenship on our campus, are they demonstrating scholarly behaviors, taking ownership of their learning and setting those goals to strive to become higher than where they already are academically, as well as making sure that they are strong leaders on our campus for others to follow. So the first student I'd like to invite up is Anusha Stepanian. Anusha's in Mrs. DeLong's 5th grade class, and Mrs. DeLong shared with me that Anusha's a great role model and a scholar at heart. She is motivated to learn and has done whatever has been required of her in 5th grade with a positive attitude. Anusha has sought excellence in every assignment she has completed and has grown immensely in her academic abilities. Her hard work and positive attitude are attributes that true scholars have, and she deserves to be Student of the Year. Her dedication to learning is admirable. She is such a joy to be around and has been a pleasure to have in class all year long. Anusha, you are an all-around amazing young lady who will accomplish great things in this world with your heart, intelligence, and determination. We are so proud of you and all that you have accomplished at Peralta Trow. Congratulations on being Student of the Year. My next amazing Bobcat I'm going to call up is Terry Trout. Terry is another amazing 5th grader, and he's in Mr. Swice's class, and I'm going to share with you what Mr. Swice shared with me. Terry is an outstanding student who wholeheartedly deserves to be recognized as Student of the Year. He approaches every task with determination, pride, and a genuine desire to learn. When faced with a challenge, Terry reflects, identifies his mistakes, and grows from them, showing true academic maturity. His scholarly habits, such as posing thoughtful, insightful questions, highlight his deep commitment to learning. Beyond academics, Terry leads with kindness, humility, and a strong work ethic. He sets a positive example for others, and it has truly been an honor to be his teacher this year. Terry, it's an honor to be your principal, as well as Anusha's', and I'm so proud of both of you and continue to shine bright in this world because, Terry, you are a positive leader and you're going to make big things happen in this great big world. So congratulations to both of my Bobcats. At this time, I'd like to invite up Mr. Russell Paperman, the principal at Cactus Canyon.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Madam Board President, School Board, Dr. Popolardo, families, students, and staff and community that's at large, thank you for coming tonight. We have a lot of kids that were nominated for... Students of the Year. This year, it was overwhelming, the vote for, they just, they stood far above and beyond. These two students, I don't know if they even socialize with each other, but they are, they have a lot in common. They actually sit next, like in the same area in the cafeteria. They both are really hard workers, they both are leaders in their groups, both in the classroom and socially. They sit with kids that are just really great friends, and if you really think about what makes people really successful, hard work and surrounding yourself with really great people. So they're doing things right. So I'm going to start with our first student, Miles Haven. So I have some messages from his teachers. Miles is a wonderful student to have in class. He's always smiling when he walks in and out, is just so contagious. He's truly a star student. He pushes for success with every task and asks questions. The second one is from the teacher of his favorite class. "Miles is a fantastic student who dedicates himself to understanding the topics. Furthermore, he has grown a lot in science this year, and I expect him to do the same when he gets to high school. Please keep up the good work and continue to ask questions to further expand your knowledge base. Good luck in high school and always remember to challenge yourself," from Mr. Lang. The second student we have for Student of the Year is Genesis Solis Extevan. The first teacher message is from her favorite class. "It has been such an honor to have Genesis as part of our avid family for the last three years. Genesis is an exceptional student and demonstrates outstanding citizenship and leadership skills. She shows true determination to always be her best, and has the skills to persevere through difficult tasks like those TRFs." What's TRF stand for? Well, she doesn't, maybe she doesn't know what the acronym is. "I will see great things from you in the future. Congratulations, Genesis, you truly deserve this," Ms. Burn. The second is from her science teacher, Mr. Lamb. "This year, Genesis has shown great pride and dedication, which is why Genesis is the Student of the Year. To continue, she strives for excellence and maintains a positive influence whenever she is struggling with her work. Above all else, she deserves to be a Student of the Year, and I know she will soar high in high school. Congratulations and keep pushing forward as you enter high school." Up next is Ms. Gin from Apache Junction High School.
Hello, Madam President and Board Members, Dr. Popolardo. I am not Ms. Gin, I am Melinda Obar, I'm one of the assistant principals, and I'm stepping in for Ms. Gin tonight to recognize two wonderful high school students. Our first one, Nathaniel Padak. So to get to know Nathaniel a little bit, he was asked a couple of questions, and I'd like to share some highlights. We asked what his biggest role model was, or who his biggest role model was. And he says, "I would say that it was my mother is my biggest role model because she has managed to provide for my family and still care for all her kids. She has taught me compassion and showed me how to cope with life's hardships." He was asked what his favorite class was in high school. He says it was biology. "It's interesting to learn about biology and the DNA structure and how it replicates." He was also asked what he plans to do after graduation. Says, "I planned on tending CAC for an associate's degree in business and then transferring to a four-year college for a bachelor's." And then for a few words from his teachers. "Nathaniel is an outstanding student who works his tail off every day in AP Economics and takes his education seriously. On top of that, he's even a better human being. He is kind, thoughtful, and shows his teachers and peers the utmost respect," from Mr. Pal. "Nathaniel is an excellent student, I think his future is bright. He always gives the extra mile with everything he does. He is respectful and a great person," Ms. Hamley. "And Nathaniel is an exemplary Apache Junction student. He is well organized and self-motivated to complete his assignments. As a senior, he's enrolled in CAC, Concurrent English 101 and 102 classes, is getting an excellent grade because of his mature writing skills," from Ms. Mallows. Congratulations, Nathaniel. Our second high school student we wanted to recognize tonight was Sophia Smith. We asked Sophia a couple of questions so that we could get to know her and you could get to know her a little bit. She was also asked who her biggest role model was. She says, "My biggest role model is my dad because he always helps others, no matter the situation. His kindness inspires me to do the same and hold myself to a higher standard." "Her favorite class is Wind Ensemble because she's gotten to make lots of friendships with peers over the course of four years. Her plans after graduation is to attend ASU to study biomedical sciences." And then her teachers have many kind words to share. "Congratulations to Sophia, an AJHS Student of the Year. Sophia is a standout scholar and exceptional role model. Sophia has excelled in rigorous AP classes while actively participating in multiple music ensembles, including jazz band, wind ensemble, and marching band. Her dedication to both academics and the arts are truly inspiring," from Mrs. Pal. "And Sophia is dedicated and passionate flute player, pianist, who constantly demonstrates excellence in both music and leadership. As an active, engaged member of the band, she participates wholeheartedly in every rehearsal, performance, and event, sending a positive example for her peers through her strong work ethic and leadership," from Ms. Miller. Congratulations, Sophia.
Okay, picture time.
Okay, picture time.
Stay for parent pictures, hang on.
Congratulations. We're gonna take a ten-minute break.
Hi.
Jeff. So Trastan's coming? I texted him. I didn't know that. He co-taught with me. And he co-taught with me for a year.
So I stole him from here. Took him to Poston for wrestling.
He's a great guy.
He was my best hire.
Yeah.
Best hire ever.
And of course Jen. They had a beautiful wedding. Off the brisket. Because Jen was the trainer before Trastan.
Yeah.
Well, that's awesome. I told him, "I'm pissed." Like, "I'm leaving."
Yeah, that was a good hire. He'll do well.
Link onto public comments. Thank you, Rock. Prohibits the already worked discussions which are not on the agenda. Again, we are posting as not on the agenda. Please don't expect the board to answer questions you've discussed today. Thank you. We will begin my Brittany Simpson. Welcome. Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Popolardo, and the people that stay. My name is Brittany Simpson and two of my children attend AJUSD schools. They receive services such as speech therapy, occupational therapy, behavior support, and counseling. On April 19th, I received mail from the Director of Special Education, Aaron Reston, that my children were, quote, impacted by either a shortage of staff to provide services pursuant to what my children's ID gave and/or was subjected to early release from the school during the period of July 17th, 2024, to November 13th, 2024. As a result, your children are required to attend the district's summer program. The letter goes on to say that they will be, quote, taught by certified special education staff and the program will be offered June 2nd to June 19th. Transportation to and from will be provided to you at your cost. I've seen devastating resignations of basically the entire STEM team at Desert Visma. I've also seen a job posting for a social worker who is going to support these students who fell through the cracks and who is responsible. Who is going to ensure that these 182 students, 182 students in our district were impacted by this? I think it's going to ensure that they receive those right of help and education, which is protected under federal law by IDEA. 182 AJUSD students' rights have been violated and these students were discriminated against. Now that the district was forced to find a solution, I would like to know where is the accountability? Even though it has to do with resignations.
You will parents of our daughter's special school champion. And as I approach age 93, I find it harder and harder to not share in a friendly way behind... I'm a longtime supporter of the school board. I'm very concerned about what appears to me to be growing partisanship and politicization of matters affecting our school and our students. Political partisanship that in the past has been evidenced by issues that have already been laid to rest. But I am very concerned about a recent announcement that I saw in a political newsletter. it was announced by Belinda Rodriguez, the Superstition Mountain Republican Club, that at a meeting this month at Avalon Elementary School, there is going to begin a nine-month course for which AJ high school students will receive extra credit. A class that's to be taught by Shane Crowzer, glowingly described by the Republican Club President, who is a neighbor of mine, as, quote, "the best instructor of the Constitution and the principles of freedom in the country." Not county, country. A Constitution class to be taught to AJ high school students by Shane Crowzer, a political candidate who dropped out of his recent campaign for Mayor of Gilbert when the Arizona Republic disclosed that Mr. Sun was associated with a notorious neighborhood gang known as the Gilbert Noodles. As the crow's, the so-called whose law license was suspended by Arizona Corporation Commission investigators uncovered evidence that he engaged in fraudulent investment practices by which he cheated three investors out of more than $225,000 unlawful activities that led Shane Crowzer to file personal bankruptcy.
I lost the camera again.
This, quote, "best instructor of the Constitution and the principles of freedom," whose classes will earn extra credit for our high school students. In your board's website, Saturday Record Street, you proclaim the lofty goal is to ensure transparency. I challenge you to place this issue on the agenda of the next board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabels. Moving on to information and discussion items. 4.1, Apache Junction High School STEM Program Update. Mr. King, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Mr. King, one of the fellow science teachers here at Apache Junction, Apache Junction High School. Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to start back when, start back on February 28th, before spring break occurred this year. The Science Departments, myself, Ms. Emmons, and the rest of the Science Team, we observed February 28th anniversary of Watson and Crick's discovery of the structure of DNA, which ushered in the computer age or technological era which we now currently enjoy. So for the, since February 28th... Oh, thank you. See, I'm too tall, is what it is. Is that better? Oh, much better. Cool, I can address you all personally now. Awesome. I don't like podiums, they're just restrictive.
Computers.
Sorry, thank you. It's February 28th of this past school year. This year, before spring break started. So we observed the Watson and Crick discovery, the structure of DNA, and its functions, which led to our technology, I guess revolution you could say. And from that day until spring break, the Science Department has literally transformed our classrooms into replicas of the Cavendish Laboratory in Cambridge, England, where all of our students were literally recreating the Watson and Crick experiments. The focus was inquiry-based discovery model building, which they did on their own. Teachers were there to guide them in this inquiry, but it was the students' task and mission to build the models and to analyze and interpret the models, which led to a really surprising understanding of the DNA structure and function. And truthfully, I've never seen, my fourth year here at AJ high school, I've never seen results on a test on the hardest chapter of biology, DNA structure, replication, and central dogma. So the STEM utilizing these recreations of these historical events adds perspective and relevance to our high school students. And the students themselves who were here earlier, they, they can vouch for that as they were actually my prior students. A few of them were. And after spring break, we began our ecology units, which is an emphasis on environmental situations, issues that we're currently facing here in Apache Junction and also the whole state of Arizona. And that too will be also STEM-driven, recreations of, we'll say, hypotheticals. And what our students would do to address them and how they're going to approach them with data. That's occurrence. That's occurrence. Status and progress of the Science Department.
So I just have to say that I was walking the high school with Ms. Gin and we visited Mr. King's classroom. It wasn't really the classroom, the kids were outside in the pod area, working on their projects. I think you brought some of the samples of what they were working on.
I do have some examples of the model building process. We call Phase One, where the students have to... On minimal data, by the way, minimal data reconstruct the DNA model and then test their model with mathematics, what they hate the most.
Very cool.
And they're right here for the board's future perusal. Feel free to keep the ones you love, discard the ones you hate.
Great.
But I try to bring the ones I felt were the most well-done. The ones that really do show the time we spent with this recreation of Watson and Crick.
It was amazing watching the students participate in this.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing us that update.
No problem.
I just wanted to see one of the posters.
This one?
Yeah.
Mr. King, will you come up?
Mr. King, will you come up and just explain this?
Isn't this self?
I think this is really cool.
So I'll be your Watson and Crick just for a few more seconds, bear with me. As this President Kimball is holding her hands and also the rest of the board members. Phase one, the model building, that is the, yes, two-dimensional structure of DNA. And just want to emphasize, unlike other class, so prior years, my past students, we didn't do this until this year. I had the students actually dive into the biochemistry as best they could, which means identifying the number of bonds between those nitrogenous bases and from those calculating whether they fit or not in a double helix structure. So a lot of mathematics was involved in that and the kids did enjoy it, though it was math. They had fun with this. As you can see, they've, the artwork and the time put into it shows their dedication to the project. And when I told them that, you know, some of your work may be recognized at the board meeting, they were all the more motivated.
We're going to keep some of these and put them up on the wall.
Yeah, they'll agree to.
Yes. Thank you so much. I'm excited for what you're going to do next year with all, with everything evolving and how like AI is now going to fit into things. I'm excited to see what the kids.
If I get AP Bio next year.
Right. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. King, Ms. Williamson? Mrs. Ross, do you have any questions?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Lane?
No questions.
Dr. Popolardo, anything you want to add?
Nice job, thank you.
Very nice job, thank you so much. All right, guys, on to the consent agenda. Somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Before we do consent agenda, I have a question.
Sure.
What is the difference? Oh, I lost it. What is the difference between a resignation and a separation of employment?
Dr. Popolardo?
I'm going to have personnel come up and talk to you about that.
Come on up.
Yeah, the difference between the separation of employment and a resignation?
Language.
I don't know if we're talking about something in particular.
No, I'm not, I'm just the, just the definition.
Resignation would be they chose to resign, separation of employment is that we are no longer having, employing them.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious as to the definition.
She just wanted the lingo.
That's not right, any Webster dictionary or anything.
It might have been up here. I understand them, so it's perfect.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto action items. Hold on, I just have to get there. Okay, six point one, possible action on early entrance screening fee for kindergarten in the amount of fifty dollars effective May first, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Verner, you want to come up?
Good evening, Madam President, governing board members, everyone else out there. We're asking you to increase the early kinder screening from thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars effective on May first. That way we can make sure that we're taking kids that are age-appropriate in terms of they meet the academic readiness and emotional readiness to be in kinder as a four-year-old. So we want parents to really think about if their child's ready to be in kindergarten at the age of four.
Right.
Any questions for Ms. Verner?
Mrs. Ross?
No questions.
Mrs. Ross?
No questions.
No? Mrs. Williamson?
No questions.
Mrs. Garcia?
I have questions.
Mrs. Lane?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Verner. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion on approving the early entrance screening fee for kindergarten in the amount of fifty dollars effective May first, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. Item six point two, possible action on the non-exempt and exempt classified contract language. Ms. Pascal, come on up.
Madam President, governing board members, Dr. Popolardo, community members and colleagues, thank you for having me here tonight. The language on both of the contracts have been updated. The language has any, any new legal language, we've gone through the attorney with everything, everything we've updated in our current, our previous ones that have been approved this year, aligning this with that same language for both of these employment groups also. That's.
So has there been any changes from last year's contracts to this year? Or are they the same?
Well, I mean, just if there were changes in like a little wording in the at-will employment based on legal advice, gave me, gave us language to update that.
Okay.
Nothing significant unless it was something that had to be adjusted, that needed corrected from last year.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Any questions on that, Mrs. Ross?
No. No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
No.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion on the non-exempt and exempt classified contract language?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-exempt and exempt classified contract language.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds.
Ross?
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. On two.
Six point three.
Six point three, possible action on the non-exempt and exempt classified employees' list for rehire for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Any questions on that? Mrs. Ross, any questions?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
No.
Would somebody like to make a motion on the rehire list for twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-exempt and exempt classified employee list for rehire for twenty-five, twenty, twenty twenty-six school year.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. Six point four, possible action on the one percent classified salary increase for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Ms. Pascal, is there anything you want to add?
No, there was nothing to add, just that we were asking for a one percent as we did for our certified to also be approved for classified staff.
Okay. Mrs. Ross, any questions on that?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
No questions, but I just want to add that this is actually a good thing because there are a lot of districts or neighboring districts that cannot give any type of praise to their employees, so I think this is great.
Yes.
But no questions.
And I think that once the state settles where they are with their budget, maybe, possibly, we can give a little more. Better pray, kind of hope.
Yes.
Can only hope.
Can I make a motion over ten percent?
How much do they? We would love that.
I can.
I would love that.
You will be denied right now.
You might have to call security first.
Gina's running out of the building.
Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion on the one percent?
One percent.
Not add zeros.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve one percent classified salary increase for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. Six point five, possible action on twenty twenty-five, twenty-six classified unpaid break benefits. Ms. Pascal, I know you're going to kind of go through this with us. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the background on this is classified staff members that are working less than two sixty-one, so they're not working throughout the whole school year. They are not working our fall, winter, and spring breaks and they do not get paid during that time. To better support our employees, we're proposing adding the following benefit to our policy procedure four dash three oh two for general leave. So basically what it means is our classified employees that are working less than two sixty-one, they would be able to utilize up to twenty-four hours of earned paid time off each of the unpaid fall, winter, and spring breaks. This allows them to receive up to three days paid for each of those breaks and it would be not to exceed nine days for the year. We would ask that they submit all requests at least ten days before the break so that we can align payment correctly and make sure that they are receiving that. Any questions?
Sounds good. Any questions, Mrs. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
No, I think this is a great option for our classified staff.
I agree, I think that's a good idea. Dr. Poplar, is anything you want to add on this?
I agree, I think this is a great option for them because they don't get paid and this is a way for them to use that.
Right.
Money and I think it'd help us as a district.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Pascal. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty.
No. I was going to just read what I was asking for the motion, but she, that's okay. You're on it, you're on it, Cameron, go.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six classified unpaid break benefit.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. Six point six, possible action on the supplemental pay schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ms. Pascal?
Yes, so the items you'll see on here, the, the difference between the twenty-four, twenty-five approved one and the one we're asking for twenty-five, twenty-six is we are asking for an increase in the rate of pay for homebound teachers. It's currently at twenty-five dollars an hour and we're asking for that to be thirty-five dollars an hour. All the other rates for substitutes are staying the same.
Can you explain what the homebound means?
Homebound teacher is somebody who would go out and provide instruction to a student who's unable to attend class at this time due to personal needs.
Thank you. Mrs. Ross, any questions on that?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No questions.
Mrs. Lane?
No questions.
Dr. Popolardo, anything you want to add on that?
I think it's time we raise it.
Yeah, I think it's important that these kids, I mean, this is something that's needed for sure. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm ready.
Ready?
I'm ready, ready. Well, that's why I just said motion because I don't want you to jump on me, so.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion on the supplemental pay schedule for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion, would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. I know, she's going back and forth.
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero.
Item six seven.
Item six seven, six point seven, possible action on the return to work program ESI employees supplemental pay for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ms. Salazar, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, governing board, Dr. Popolardo, and our dedicated audience. We are due for our contract renewal for ESI and we currently pay employees who go on this program at ninety-four percent of their base salary.
We're on the six point seven.
Yes. So we're asking to change to ninety percent, from ninety-four to ninety percent. Okay, supplemental. Okay, supplemental. Currently we pay supplemental at a hundred percent of, if a coach is going to get, say, fifteen hundred dollars, we pay fifteen hundred dollars and on top of that, ESI charges eighteen percent. So we're asking to move that down to ninety percent and.
So is this just to approve the program?
The return to work program, ESI employees?
No, this is a supplemental.
I can't hear, Ms. Pascal.
The supplemental, yeah.
It might be in the wrong order, we probably should have done the.
It says ESI employees supplemental pay.
Mm-hmm. This is like part two of the agreement, so maybe we should go to six point nine first.
There's three items.
Right.
I think, I think six point nine is renewing the contract itself and then six point seven is the supplemental portion and then six point eight is the contractual.
Right, so this is just renewing the contract?
This part is the supplemental.
The supplemental, okay.
So we're currently paying a hundred percent, we're asking to pay ninety percent.
Okay.
Of the supplemental pay.
So not ninety-four, it's a hundred percent? No, no, this is supplemental. I thought she said ninety-four.
Well, because six point eight says ninety-four percent.
Right, so I think it's, the order is just a little out of, out of order. So right now, so just so you have the background, right now we pay ninety-four percent of the contractual pay and a hundred percent of supplemental. So we're asking for supplemental to go down to ninety percent.
Right.
And then when we get down to six point eight, we're asking for that to go to ninety percent.
Can we turn that down? I can't hear.
I know, we can't hear what the air run in.
And this is like so important.
I feel like I'm yelling, so.
No, you're not. Yell louder. It's, the air is terrible.
What's the difference between a supplemental salary and the other, the other thing that we're talking about?
Supplemental is anything in addition to their actual salary. So if we have a, somebody like doing a club, club sponsor or athletics.
Okay.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ross.
If we reduce, I mean, of course we're all for saving money, but if we reduce their pay, I mean, we're reducing their regular ESI pay and now we're going to reduce the supplemental, which is extra duties that they're taking on, I'm, I, I'm just a little hesitant to, to cut that deep, you know?
Right.
But do the same chunk of people get the supplemental versus the, the regular pay?
It varies.
Or is it?
It, it varies.
Right, so it's not necessarily the same people that are losing?
Well, if, if somebody is already on ESI and they take on an additional duty, then yeah.
Oh, okay, this is for additional duties for ESI employees, gotcha, gotcha.
Right, so that's why it's the supplemental.
Right, gotcha.
So in the past, I don't, like, this is something new for this year because we haven't done that before. So this is so like for, you know, they get a stipend and they're in ESI, they would then be reduced eighteen percent of that supplemental pay.
I'm not, I, I have my own, so I'll let you do.
Okay, so for me, I, I think the amount that they get is kind of small as it is to, for eighteen percent to take out of it. I mean, we're really appreciative that these people take on this extra duties, so I know it's your recommendation and I don't know if it's easier if they're on ESI just to do everything with the eighteen percent, but I think like in the past, it was, the supplemental wasn't touched for their ESI.
It wasn't and it is based on financials just to kind of help the district because we're paying the full salary plus eighteen percent on top of that.
Right, I mean, I can understand for the salary part of it.
All right, and I was just recommending that because that's, after speaking with ESI, they did say that there are some districts that keep it the same for contractual and supplemental.
So it's really either or, right, okay. So let's go around and see. So, Mrs. Ross, we know where you are on that. Mrs. Williamson?
I, I'm not comfortable with cutting this.
Okay. Mrs. Garcia?
I'm definitely not comfortable cutting, I was figuring out today, so if we had, let's just say extracurricular or a coach getting paid like thirty-five hundred dollars, then we would, we would be cutting it down to ninety percent, so then they would be getting like thirty-one fifty.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to stick with the 100%. Sorry.
Mrs. Lane?
I like the 100% too. We're already cutting, like Gil said, we're already cutting.
That's a lot of hours that our coaches, yeah.
I know, they put in a lot of extra work.
Yeah, I think if we're already cutting in the other area, I, I don't see a need to cut further at this time. Maybe I'll change it, not right now.
Well, Dr. Papalardo, is there anything you want to add on that?
Well, you know, it's, it's the, it's the board's prerogative to how you do that. So what I would say is that next year, we're going to bring it back, and maybe the supplemental, I'm sorry, when she goes to the next item that talks about where she's cutting it to 94, maybe that goes to 90, I don't know, too. Because the problem is that we're paying 118%, we're not just paying 100%.
Right, the issue that I'm having, and I'll just speak specifically for coaches because I've been there with them, that's a lot of hours for the stipend that we're getting anyways. Like, that's a lot of hours just for $3,500. And to cut it on top of that, when we have several that have resigned this year, I'm always hopeful that we would get more competitive with our stipends than going backwards. So I, I want to make, I will make the motion for 100%.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just have one question. I don't know exactly how this all works. Is there a way to negotiate that 18.5% fee with ESI?
No, it's a standard fee that they charge any district that goes on with them.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd make a, Nick, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion on the return-to-work program for ESI at 100% for employee supplement base pay for 2025-2026 school year.
Would somebody like to second?
I'll second, sorry.
Oh, Ms. Lane, seconds. I was waiting for you. I'm like, what?
Sorry, I'll second, I got it.
All right. Mrs. Ross?
No.
No, you mean yes.
I mean yes?
Yeah, well, she can't mean motion to keep it at 100%.
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't hear all of that, sorry.
Okay, so are you a yes now?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Mrs. William, I mean, Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Okay, item 6.8, possible action to change the return-to-work program, ESI, from 94% to 90% for employees joining the program effective July 1st, 2025.
Correct. So this is a portion, we currently pay 94% of their salary. We're asking to move that to 90%. And again, this is just to help with district finances. And to give you some idea, say, we, we have seven people on ESI right now, and if we take their 100% salary, and if we were to do the 90%, that would save the district about $67,000.
It's different.
So, and it's different from year to year, depending on who's retiring, so...
Right.
That's just kind of an example of what we could save.
Okay. So the people that are on it now, it's not going to affect?
No, it'll just be anybody starting July 1st.
I just want to make sure. Okay. All right, any questions on that, Mrs. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No, I'm reading the motion to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
So, everybody that is here, so anybody that gets hired, effective July 1st, 2025, it's 90%?
Correct.
Right.
Through ESI.
Right. Mrs. Lane?
No questions.
I just have a question regarding the 1% salary increase. Would this, would they get that 1%?
Not when they go on ESI, but when they return.
When they return?
They would get the increase.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they get it, okay. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion? Ms. Garcia?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to change the return-to-work program, ESI, from 94 to 90% for, for employees joining the program effective July 1st, 2025.
Remove supplemental pay out of it because it's part of the language.
I'll ask ESI for the next one. Okay.
Oh, the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, so your motion's good.
Okay.
Would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Okay. There's so many ESI ones here. Okay, 6.9, possible action on the ESI program renewal for 25-26 school year.
So this is the overall renewal, and I will reach out to ESI and have them send a new renewal with the supplemental at 100%.
Okay.
And contractual stay at 90%.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Alzar, Ms. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
No.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion on the ESI program renewal for 2025-2026 school year.
Removing the supplemental.
Oh, removing the supplemental?
Yes.
For 2025-2026.
Yeah, because that would have to come out of the new...
Got it.
New contract. Okay, we have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you. 6.10, possible action on charging the company vendor for the E-rate public record request in the amount of $10,550. Dr. Papalardo? Ms. Verna, come on up.
We are asking you guys to go ahead and prove the amount because we have a public records request from an E-rate procurement. Basically, this company slash vendor is requesting the information so they can use it in future biddings to try to be awarded possible E-rate procurement in a different district. So they want our information of how we scored it, how we procured it, so they could use it for their benefits.
Okay, can we charge her more? No, I'm just going to... Mrs. Ross, any questions on that?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia? Any questions on that? You want more money, too, huh?
No, we, I think you asked us, we checked with, like, this is...
All legal, yeah.
All legal, right, okay. All right, no questions.
Mrs. Lane?
No questions.
Dr. Papalardo, anything you want to add on this?
No.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve on the charging the company vendor for the E-rate public record request in the amount of $10,550.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
I will second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Verna. 6.11, possible action on the following job description, administrative secretary to the special education director, Medicaid data analysis, special education preschool and private day, 504 plan, special education appliance, coach coordinator, and special education instructional coach coordinator. Ms. Preston, come on up. Good evening.
Thanks for having me. So these are the top descriptions that we've had the conversation about a couple times. Nothing has changed in them.
Okay. Do you want to give us a little rundown on why you're making these changes?
I'd be happy to.
Good.
I'd be happy to. So right now, we're realigning job descriptions to what the job tasks are. We're working towards being compliant. It's the same. Amount of people, it's just changing, you know, the job roles, making sure that we are going to be in alignment with the state and everything else that's come up over the last couple of years.
Perfect. Mrs. Ross, any questions on that?
No.
Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
Are we going to need all these positions still?
Mrs. Lane?
No questions.
So this isn't really going to cost the district more money, is that what it is?
These are positions that are currently, we have people in these positions.
Right.
That are current for this school year, and we're just moving forward with a new job title with their job descriptions very clear.
Okay.
Realigning a couple things.
Perfect. Dr. Papalardo, anything you want to add?
So what I want to say about that is this. We're in good stead with the State Department right now in special education, as you know. This will keep us in good stead because people now will know exactly what they are required to do so that you don't have another OCR stake in place. That's what this gets us to, okay? So I would recommend that you approve them.
I think this is really good. I think we're really doing a good job organizing.
Yeah, we just want to master kids in the best way we can, so this is, we're putting that support here.
And I think you mentioned that this will also help with evaluation, like aligning your evaluation system with the job description, so that'll be good. Thank you so much. Would somebody like to make a motion on the job descriptions?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion on the following job descriptions, administrative secretary to the special education director, Medicaid data analysis, special education preschool and private day school, 504 plan, special education compliance coach coordinator, and special education instructional coach coordinator.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
I will second.
Ms. Lane, seconds. Mrs. Ross?